All right, good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, July 16th. It's the monthly meeting of the planning board. If everybody could stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda would be Acorn Place residential community development extension request for the special permit. And presenting will be Mr. Cannon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Edward Cannon, on behalf of the applicant. Not really much to update at this point. The paving has to get done.
I'm sorry.
Not really much to update at this point, Mr. Chairman. The paving has to get done, and then the work surrounding that can get done. So he's still anticipating the paving towards the end of the summer. And then, once that gets done, you know, those items around that can get done. So that's where we're at at this point.
So on that, and I know the board, I wasn't here at the last one, they did ask, you know, we've been trying to dial in that date on when that paving's going to happen. And there's a lot of, as you heard from the last meeting, there's a lot of frustration from the residents and from, you know, the board itself on that date. So how do we get a commitment from Mr. Fox on that?
Can't get more specific than that at this time.
Okay.
It's a combination of scheduling the pavers from when they're at Emerson, so they're nearby and they can get over there, but also along, coordinating that at a time when the resources are there to be able to pay for it. So it's a combination of those factors. Because, as you know, the applicant has nothing. So it's a matter of being able to bring those two things together. He would like to be able to do it at a specific date, but it depends on the progress of Emerson.
Okay. All right, go ahead, Jim.
Just quickly, I think that, you know, the neighbors know that I drive through there quite often and I check what's going on. One of the neighbors sent me an email of a concern about the parking lot, the spaces that were in the middle. I did address that with Mr. Fox directly. And, you know, Dan, you know, his engineer. And I believe, was that taken care of? That issue, I believe, they haven't ripped it back up yet, or?
No.
Yeah.
It's not completed.
So, but they, but they, he removed it. It's going to be taken care of. Because what was causing was the issue of the flooding. So, I mean, you know, Mr. Fox did address that, I mean, immediately. One of the residents, I don't know if he's here, he had sent me an email and pictures of it. And I did address it with Mr. Fox and his engineer, and they did respond very quickly, like, the next day. So I don't know, I just want to report to the board that he did respond.
All they did is tear it up.
He tore it up.
Tear it all up.
No, it's going to be taken, but he's going to replace it.
And let's just back up a little bit for you guys, okay? So after the last meeting, I went to town council. And I spoke to town council. So we are, at this point in time, we are here on your behalf, and the town technically doesn't really have any ability to force anything to happen, okay? We are bringing in Mr. Cannon. We are keeping Mr. Fox's attention, okay? But right now, we don't have a stick to use, okay? So we understand your frustration. We're on your side. We're trying to do the best we can. Technically, right now, this is actually an issue between you, meaning the homeowners, and the builder, okay? I checked with town council. The town technically doesn't have anything to do with that. So we're here on helping you out, going above and beyond. So just want to let you know, when you're getting upset with, you know, what Mr. McKay said, we're trying to do the best we can to help you.
But there was no bond that was put on.
There shouldn't be a bond.
There should have been a bond that was put on the.
Technically, no, technically, I talked to town council. Technically, I called to town council, and the town is not required to carry a bond.
But Emerson Place has a bond put on their property.
It's a definitive subdivision. It's a different thing. So it's a different.
Why? Why is it different?
And if you need to come up, you need to come up to the, you need to come up to the mic to speak.
I've lived there 38 months. Nothing has changed. I have no irrigation, no sidewalks, no driveways.
Tell you what, listen, listen, ma'am, you need to, you need to either come up to the mic, so the people at home can hear, okay? Or, we're not cutting you off. I'm saying if you want to get your point out, please come to the podium.
Okay.
And we just need to know your name.
Karen McVeigh, Unit 29, Acorn Place. I've lived there 38 months. Nothing has changed. There's no irrigation. There's no sidewalks. Nothing has been paved. They just spent probably 10 days digging up what was put down as extra parking spaces. It flooded, and the whole thing had to be ripped up. At whose cost? I do not know. But it's just insane to me that this has gone on for so long. And shame on the town of Milis.
Don't do not say shame on, do not, do not.
Say shame on the town of Milis.
No.
My father is a contractor up in New Hampshire. He's never heard of a town that has not put on a bond on the builder. So that things could be repaired, there could be a little bit of threat put on that builder if things don't turn out correctly. I just, I'm appalled. I'm appalled at what has been going on here for 38 months.
So again, Mr. Chairman, just to finish, the parking lot was ripped up because of the damage it was doing to the rest of, that's why it was ripped up, because of the flooding. It's going to, it is being redesigned for when he does the final pavement, and it will drain properly into the system.
And when is the final pavement going to be done?
Well, I think that the chair had spoken that this is, this is a private development. And when you purchase, when you all purchased your property, it was in the deed that this is a private development between you, you own that. So when the road breaks up, or whatever, the sidewalks crack up, the homeowners association will have to repair them. The town will not come in. We don't plow it, as you know. We don't come in and do any repairs, anything in there. The waters, sewer, anything in that system is going to be up to the homeowners, because it's a private development. It is not taken over because of the way it was proposed to get it clustered so closely. That's how it was passed.
So am I the dodo for buying a property there at Acorn Place?
I don't want to say that.
Am I the dodo? Because I don't think so.
Why do you pay such a high taxes?
Pardon?
Why do you pay such a high taxes?
Yeah, we pay a lot of taxes.
For what?
The frustration in that whole development has been astronomical. And far more than my 66-years-old deserve. And I'm here tonight to tell you, this should not happen again. There should be a bond on every single builder that comes to Milis that puts up any kind of housing. There should be a bond. Because this is not fair. And I am not a millionaire. I don't have a lot of extra money. I'm a stupid teacher. I don't have money. Thank you.
Okay. So anyhow, just to follow up one more time, is that this is a private development, and that's part of the problem. Now, that being said, we have had conversation that, you know, going forwards, I think that, you know, the statement that you made, we should try to make sure that there was a bonding going forwards. It just didn't happen this time. So anyhow, is there anything else?
The commission stopped there. Thanks.
All right. So, Mr. Cannon, you're basically, sometime in the fall, hopefully, the paving will happen, and?
Exactly.
Yep, and we will see you, well, actually, we have to make a motion.
The next meeting, Mr. Chairman, is in three weeks, August 6th. So I'm more than happy, this is one of my favorite places to come back to, so I'm more than happy to come back and repeat what I've just done, but I also don't want to raise the temperature in the room more and increase frustration. So whatever you want, Mr. Chairman.
All right, let's just.
I don't expect a lot to be done in three weeks.
No, that's fine. Just a minute, somebody actually had raised their hand before. Come on up to the mic and.
My name's Pat Namath. I bought the last unit, Unit 37, at Acorn Place. First, a little bit of background. I am an architect and an urban planner. I served 15 years as a planning director. And I was on the planning board of the Town of Bourne, also on the zoning board of appeals. Always, always, every special permit that we had before us was required to carry a bond. So that, worse came to worse, you had some muscle in the game to make sure it happened. And that the developer's representative couldn't just sit here and say, well, I'm sorry, there's no schedule. There should be a specific schedule. And you should have that. And when you say it just didn't happen, I don't know if any of you were on the board when this special permit was approved, but I bet you, in that record, the standard conditions carried a bond, and Fox argued that he didn't need to carry it, and it was excused. Because I've never brought a permit forward like this without a bond in it. And I've never sat on the planning board in my town without making sure there was a bond. So I just want to compliment you for taking it up with town council, because I don't really think the town can waive its responsibilities to ensure the completion of the project as required by the special permit. Thank you.
Was there someone else, or?
Okay.
Okay. All right. With that being said, our next portion would be to, I make a motion to extend the special permit. And how do we want to do that? Do we want to wait until, do we want to see Mr. Cannon again in a month?
Sure.
Okay.
Come on in.
Yep, all right. So we'll do it till the, what's the date?
August 6.
All right, August 6th, so.
So you're extending the special permit to August 6.
Yep. All right, so I make a motion to extend the special permit to August 6.
Second.
All right, motion's made, made in second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in.
My pleasure.
Yes. And we'll go from there.
Okay.
It's a public hearing, so you can move forward.
Oh, okay. All right, next item, Emerson Place, definitive subdivision, covenant release request.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, Edward Cannon, on behalf of the applicant. And all of the requirements for the covenant by which those last four lots were held have been satisfied. So the easement for the roadway, the drainage was granted and recorded, and then there were two payments. There was a fire fund payment and.
Sidewalk.
Yeah, sidewalk fund. And both of those have been paid. So, and there is a bond in place, excuse me, there is, yeah, there's bond in place. So it was really held on to those four to allow some of the lots to begin to be sold. Because we had to, just by way of background, we had to remove some of the land from registration before we could grant the easements. So the board graciously allowed the remaining lots to be released, holding on to those four lots, to make sure that those last items were done. So those have all been done, and he's prepared to begin to move those last four lots.
So in using these, these lots would be, if these were released, this would be part of the progress that he needs to get that paving?
Yes. And in addition, this project is bonded, so, you know, there's additional. This isn't related to the bond, really, because the bond replaced the covenant, but it was additional security to make sure that that easement was granted, which couldn't be done until the portion of the land was removed from registration. And I was just waiting for an order from the land court.
Right, and just so you guys in the audience know, and I talked to Steve about this, the head of the HOA. Unfortunately, this is two different, it's two different businesses that are doing this. So I know it's the same person, but.
It's actually not. So this is a different makeup.
No, I get, I get.
So Mr. Fox is involved, but it's a different.
It's a different, right. So it's not, it's, even though it's the, it's a, the same person, it's a different company. So we can't, we can't use this to hold them hostage, because we had already brought that up with town council. That was one of the questions that we had asked. But it's, you know, it's, you know, the, you know, general dynamics is building one, and GE's building the other. So I, we can't, it's two different companies. We can't go after them for that. So we have to judge this on the merits of what's been presented. I think everything we needed is here, so.
Council's already proved it.
Yeah, and town council's already proved it. So I make a motion that we approve the release of covenant for the final four lots at Emerson Place.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okey dokey.
If I could, please, yeah, I have to pass that along to council.
You guys will want to sign, and then I will, you need to get your note arrived.
Please, yeah, just please.
If you want to sign with your line, and then I will.
Change the bylaw. Change the zoning bylaw. Just a clarification.
That can keep a pretty little face, you know, straight face over there.
Lots of practice.
Might have to play poker with him.
I'll leave you this line out.
No, you, don't worry. Okey dokey.
Something I said?
You might want to stay for a while.
Yeah.
Go out and back them.
Okey dokey, does that?
Hopefully, smooth sailing for you guys after this.
This is like going to a slugman's meeting.
I don't think so. I think we have to check with town council on that.
On what?
I think she, the woman, am I, are we correct on that? I don't know. I don't want to put you on the spot. The bond that she spoke of, is it required on a private development?
No.
Well, it was because it was a, it's, the over 55 development is designed very differently.
Correct.
Based on, based on our.
And I think that's where I think she was.
So to allow that to happen, you got to change the zoning bylaw.
Right.
I think what happened, and I, because I only came in because the act was, and I think they were through this, I think there was a huge reserve set aside, but they brought the litigation.
Yes. That's what I remember about it.
That pretty much took care of it. And that's why the applicants waited. And so anything that he had set aside, clubhouse, any of that stuff, he just can't do.
Well, then, that woman who was on the planning board in Bourne should have realized that, if she had read the zoning bylaw.
She read the zoning bylaw. Our bylaw.
What's the applied status then? Someone who hasn't got a plan, they just snatch the law. That's one of the benefits you will.
Unfortunately, you know, I mean, the standards.
Unfortunately, the guy that wanted that ripped up, he wasn't, that's what he requested, to rip it up. You should have seen the flooding that was caused by that. They sloped it this way. And Dan, Dan had nothing to do with the design.
To get on the six.
Did American? No.
Probably mean possibly.
And then when he looked at it, he looked like, and he made him go in the next day and rip it up. Now it slows back and flows into the, by the way.
All right, thank you, Ted. Have a good night.
Thanks, Ted.
All right, and let's get back to what we were doing, sorry. All right, next item on the agenda, let's see, special permit for site plan approval. Public hearing continued.
Request a continuation to the September 10th meeting.
Yep, so, do you want to go ahead and read that, please?
Town of Milis Office of the Planning Board, notice of public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 11, Mass. General Law, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 16th, 2024, at 7:50 PM, in the Veterans' Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Milis, on the application of Dimitri Tupatis, Dover Road Solar LLC, 401 Edgewater Place, Suite 540, Wakefield, Mass., 01880, requesting a special permit for site plan approval under Section 11, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation, and Section 13C of the zoning bylaw, the Town of Milis, for installation of a 498-kilowatt AC ground-mounted solar array on property located at 140 Dover Road, Milis, Mass., Assessor's Map 53, Lot 6, property owned by BASF Corporation. Copy of the application and the site plan is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and on the planning board's website. Any person interested and wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. This public hearing has been requested to be continued without discussion to Tuesday, September 10th, 2024, at 8:00 PM. Richard Nichols, Chair.
Okey dokey. All right, so, do we have to make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I make a motion that we continue the hearing till September 10th.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, great. Next one, bylaw changes for November town meeting, temporary structures, signs, and illumination. So did you guys talk about this last time?
A little bit.
At all?
Yeah, we did. My feeling.
Need up to the mic only.
Oh, you're going to pull the mic.
That's right, I forgot.
Yeah, get a mic up.
Yeah, yeah, mic, mic up. My feeling is that we should keep the current bylaw, maybe look at it and change it and try to pull some other bylaws from other towns. I've talked to some other.
And I'm sorry, which one, Mike? The temporary structure?
Right, the temporary structure.
Okay, sorry.
I've talked to other building commissioners regarding this in meetings, and some of the issues that pop up, why this is important to have, is that all the departments get, gets notified ahead of time, well ahead of time. One instance, in one town had an issue where they issued a special permit, they had a big function in a field, they didn't cut the field, somebody drove a long way, they had their oil pan leaking, and they caught the whole field and the tent on fire. So they, they added a condition that they had to be inspected, they had to cut fields where they were going to have parking, so that wouldn't happen again. So there's a lot of things that can, like I've seen in the past 21 years, and when we had these type of venues go on, the building official, if you're just going to issue the permit without the special permit process, the building official and the fire chief are the only two that are notified to issue the permit. And usually, when things go awry, either the fire department shows up, the police department comes, and, you know, how come we weren't notified? So I think it's a good idea to keep it. Maybe we can just make it a general overview of a special permit process to make sure that all the departments are notified well in advance and, and get a parking plan. I think the parking plan is very important, because a lot of people can come to the functions. You have the problem, well, not a problem, but the requirement of handicap parking. If it's, they're going to have a function, and it's open to the public, then they're going to have to require handicap parking with handicap facilities. That's always pertinent to notify the applicant well ahead of time, so they're aware of that, and you can show it on the, on the plan and have all that, you know, planned out within a couple, couple of weeks or a month ahead of time of the, not the last day.
And that's one of the things that I think it, that has come up. You know, it's, all that sounds great. The problem is, what usually happens is, is that someone's going to do something, and so they call the tent company, and they call them a month in advance. And it doesn't leave enough time, you know what I mean? So I, what you're saying makes 100% sense. You and I, you know, we know the routine. It's just that, you know, a lot of people have, or we've had instances where people have come in, and, you know, it's like, holy, how do we make this thing happen? So, I mean, big ones, I get. I think that makes 100% sense. You know, is it something where, like, a smaller, you know, because I can't remember the size, is it?
400.
400.
No, the size in the bylaw is 500, but currently, for most people, having been to five graduation parties in a six-week period, most, and having had one myself, most of the tents that people are getting are 20-by-30 tents, which is 600 feet.
Right.
And all of those people that are putting in a tent in their backyard for a day, that are not having, it's not in a field, it's not one of these sided tents, it's not, people are parking on the street. And, you know, that may be something, obviously, that the police would want to know about. But I think if somebody is having a big event in a big area, one of these huge massive tents with DJs, and they're going to look into it, the average citizen who is getting a tent for a graduation party, or of, you know, some fund, just something in their yard, this bylaw's not going to be followed, because nobody, it's not going to occur to anybody that to, to go to the tent. I mean, if I get a fence, I rely on the fence company to tell me, you know, I'm asking them, what, do I need permits or something? The tent come, a rental, like, company's not going to say, oh, you need to go get a special permit. So I think if, I think we could balance this if we increase the square footage that requires this special permit, and maybe, as you said, slim down, it's not a full special permit, but there's just, there's more of a notification process. Because you're right, when you rent the tents, there isn't enough time to find, to go through the special permit.
Usually, you can't even get them.
Well, and, yeah, I mean, and the thing is, is that if you tell somebody it's going to cost you $600 to rent a tent and have them come, I got a package, $600 for the tent, the chairs, the table, they came, they set it up, and I had to pay each kid a $20 tip. But if I had to go do, then you're going to tell me I got to spend another 375 to the town to do that? I think you're going to have, nobody's going to follow it. People are just going to.
And so, in 21 years, I've probably had two people come in and ask what the regulations are to put up a tent in their backyard. So the regulation is, if it's 200 square feet or larger, it's a temporary structure, you need a building permit. Not a site plan review, but a building permit to put up a tent. Like I said, two people in 21 years came in and got building permits to put up a graduation tent. So.
I'm one of them. I still have it.
And I'll be honest, I wasn't one of them.
And I don't chase anybody on it unless the neighbors call, or if the police or the fire call. Then I say, well, you're in violation of the building code, you need a building permit. And that's when the liability factor comes in for the homeowner. So like you had said, if, you know, we could put something in, if it's a graduation tent, or, you know, you could, you could, you could capture, like, if it's a special event where it's a wedding.
And I'll be honest, I wasn't one of them.
And I, I don't chase anybody on it unless the neighbors call, or if the police or the fire call, then I say, well, you're in violation of the building code, you need a building permit. And that's when the liability factor comes in for the homeowner. So like you had said, if, you know, we could put something in, if it's a graduation tent or, you know, you could, you could, you could capture, like, if it's a special event where it's a wedding and you're going to have an occupant load of X amount of people, the occupant load is determined by the size of the tent. You can go that route as well, saying that the, that they're going to have seating, they have tables, this is the occupant load, then that'll require a special permit. I mean, we could look into all of that to change the bylaw so it's no, it's not as restrictive at it as it is to allow for some of these, you know, for the graduation party tents and, you know, the, the big, with the wedding tents, the, the big, bigger type of functions really need to be, to go have some sort of process that everybody knows about.
Oh, I agree with you, and I, I think this should be something that we.
I just want to say, I just received another email from a tent company. I've been working with someone for another wedding at 140 Causeway Street that thankfully is in September, so they've had enough time to get everything to me, to advertise, to get on the agenda for August 6th, and the wedding is the end of September. And hopefully, they'll make it. But in addition to the public hearing and doing the decision, I believe there's still a 20-day appeal period, and then does it have to be recorded at the Registry of Deeds as well?
Well, technically, yes, but they can, the permit can be issued on their own, you know, cognizant that they're.
At risk.
Yeah, at risk.
Well, because when I issue the decision, the cover page says, you know, talks about appeals, and then it says, after 20 days have passed, go to the town clerk's office and get a certified copy of the decision to record at the registry.
Somebody can start under their own. I mean, as long as they know what the ramifications are, or somebody appeals it.
Okay. So who would tell them that?
Me.
Oh, okay.
All right. All right. No, that's.
We can, we can do some more research. I can do some more research on it.
No, I think, because I, I had talked to, one of my many conversations with town council, we'd, I had, we had talked about that. And, and what he said was that the bylaw was, when it was written, he said, his quote, to quote, cast a wide net. So basically, you know, whoever did it, did a good job. It pretty much, you know, covered everything. We just may, like you said, we may just want to, you know, maybe tweak the edges a little bit to make it so it's, and I, and like I said, I agree with 100%. The bigger tents that are here, that are on use all the time, they're, I mean, they're structures, you know, so those are, you know, that's a no-brainer. That's, you know, those got to be safe, and they have to be, meet the code, 100%.
Right.
So, the other idea, unless anyone had somebody else.
Couple more comments on this. I would like to see on a smaller tent, a simpler process. Just go to the clerk's office, hand her $20, she gives you a list of what you need to know about your tent. Everyone gets notified, done. You know, to have a bylaw that people don't know about, that people don't follow, that we don't enforce, doesn't mean a whole lot. It doesn't accomplish anything.
Well, we, we do have the regulation in the building code, which requires smaller tents to obtain, obtain a building permit prior to them putting it up.
For, if it's erected for more than seven days, correct?
No. The building code is, you put one up for one day, it's required, you got a, it's a temporary structure. This is without, you know, the zoning bylaws, this is the state building code.
Okay.
So tents are required. You put up a tent that's over 200 square feet, it's required that you obtain a building permit for a temporary structure, if you get it up for one day. So if something happens, they're in violation of the state building code, they didn't get a permit, then it's the owner's responsibility for that. And then they, they drag in the tent company who put it up, and it gets to be, you know, a big legal issue, especially if somebody gets hurt.
Sure.
Well, I think then, maybe one of the things we should look at is how do we notify the residents that this is actually.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, that's one of the things, it's, it's probably on the website or whatever, but it's still, it's, you know, you wouldn't think of it. You, you know, we could, we could notify the tent companies that, you know, that do business in the area to say, hey, listen, we're going to make you guys responsible for it, you know, but that what's still going to happen is, it'll be, you know, just like when I, we get a tent for my, my kid's graduation, you know, oh, we need to get a tent, you know? So, you know, a month before, we're calling to get tents, they're all gone. We finally found one in, you know, East Oshkosh, and by that point in time, it was like a week before, you know, so even, even if I had, you know, it, it just, the timeline would not allow it, so. So I think.
But I think for notifying, it's on his, it's on his e-permitting, whatever we're doing now, all of a sudden. It should, it should be a checkbox on there, and it's up to the homeowner to have that responsibility to go check there. And then the liability issue for the town is waived because it's there, and if it's, if the homeowner doesn't go through that process, then it's their responsibility.
The, the ultimate liability lies with the person who puts up the tent. The state building code requires a construction supervisor's licensee to obtain the building permit to put up the temporary structure, tent.
Is this supposed to be, sir?
Now, it's up to the discretion of the building official whether they want to issue a homeowner's exemption permit, where the homeowner's responsible for meeting the building code for putting up the tent. But it's, it's completely the discretion of the building official. When you get into 200 square feet above, and the requirement of obtaining the, the permit, it's the construction supervisor's license, the tent people's supposed to have one. So a lot of times, that don't happen. They just, you know, the homeowners rent the tent, they drop the tent off, and they leave, and they, you know, they, they have to figure out how to put it up. The problem occurs when something happens, where the tent falls, or you have a high wind and a big storm, and people are under it and they get hurt, and then that's when all the disaster starts. So, but it, it circles back to the person who supplies the tent and puts up the tent. They're required to get a building permit and have a construction supervisor's license, so.
That's what surprised me, because I know when, when we did my son's graduation, we had a tent, and we went to Primavera, and the first thing Jerry says, you've got to get a permit for the tent. And it was his tent, but, you know, he, he wouldn't put it up if I didn't have the permit.
Well, it's liability, yeah.
Well, he doesn't say that anymore.
Right. But those issues are still addressed if we have a simpler process. Exactly. And it's, don't need a building permit. So you go to town clerk, get your $20, I'm going to put a tent permit up, with the information sheet that says you've got to go to the building department and get a building permit. So you can eliminate out all the, all the planning board stuff and all the lengthy delays and expense on the homeowner by simplifying this process, and it still goes through you.
Right. The homeowner permits, again, I don't have a problem with simplifying that down to not coming to the planning board. It's the, the venues that create the problem.
Oh, absolutely. I agree with you 100% on that. I mean, if you're putting something, if you're putting a, a tent up for the summer, you're putting up a tent for more than a couple of days, then that should be going through, you know, or if you're getting one of these.
Even a weekend is, you know.
Even one of these, the huge tents with the three sides and, and parking, as you were saying, absolutely. But especially something that's going up, you know, more than a couple of days. But the average, you know, 600 square foot, the 20-by-30 tent that's going up with, for, you know, somebody could, like, for example, I called and said I wanted to rent it for Saturday, and they said, all right, we'll be there on, I knew they would be there on Thursday or Friday to set it up because my son works for Primavera. And Thursdays and Fridays, he goes and sets up tents. Saturdays and Sundays, he does the delivery and the catering, and Mondays and Tuesdays, they go and take the tents down. I mean, we were surprised that there was going to be a tent in our yard for five days. I'm like, I don't want it for five days, and my son said, yeah, that's what you're getting, Mom.
I mean, you know, we can narrow the requirement down to what's existing and rewrite it, but I, I don't recommend, you know, taking it completely out.
No, I, no, I agree.
Well, I would leave the seven-day portion in place. You want a weekend, too, right?
I think we could do this temporary structure as two different temporary structures that are either over a certain size or that are going to be up for more than X number of days, and have that be, you know, a more, this, a more detailed process versus something that's going up for a weekend and that's only 5, 6, 700 square feet. You do, as you were saying, do something that's more simple, that you go to the town, you go to the building inspector, and they say, okay, yes, you need to, you can get the homeowner's permit and, oh, and you need, but you also need to go notify the police department and go notify the, the fire department. And maybe we ask the police and the fire department to simply prepare a form, so the homeowner has to come back to you with a form that's been signed off.
Checked off.
You know, just checked off by the police department and the fire department, acknowledging that they're acknowledging the homeowner's had told them.
Right.
And then, you know, it's, it's a little bit of legwork, but it's, you know, whatever the fee is, and it's just a simple fee. It's not the $400 for, and the whole approval process, the, the appeal process, recording all of that. So I think it would make sense for us to.
Now, if we went to do this, we would have to, this has to be, go to town meeting.
If, yes, it does have to be approved at town meeting, and if you wanted to go on the file, we have to hold a pub, like, it has to be reviewed by town council, we have to hold a public, we have to send it to the select board to refer back to us to hold a public hearing in order to get on the warrant. It would have to basically be done by September in order to get on the November town meeting. So if you wanted to draft something, maybe, and discuss it at the next meeting, and have town council look at it, we would have time to hold a public hearing and potentially get it as an article on the November town meeting.
Yeah, we could, we could do it where, we've done it before, where if you, if you guys sent it in, we can kind of combine the, the, you know, combine it into one document. You know, if you had any modifications you wanted to add into it, you could send them into Camille, and then we could, you know, amalgamate it together, I think that's a word. And, and, you know, we can discuss it at the next, next meeting.
Yeah.
So it's going to be a busy meeting.
And if you, if you wanted to sign each two, it would probably be incorporated into the same, you know, article, a public hearing, just do it all at once, if you want to make changes.
Right. And well, and then that was going to go on to the next thing, would be the signs, so on, I think on the signs, you know, I, I, obviously, I don't know if you guys talked about that, but I think the only thing specifically, well, two things. I think, I like, I'm going to bring up a, a item that always bugged Brutus, is the, is the feather, the feathers. So I think those, you know, it's those signs that stay up forever until they finally wear out. Yeah, so I think.
That's a temporary sign, they're not allowed.
Yeah, so I think those need to go.
Yeah, they're, they're not allowed anyway.
Yeah.
They're just, we just don't get complaints on them. We don't, we don't run around the town and, you know, you're in violation of zoning bylaw because 48 specifically requires that it be in writing to the building commissioner of a zoning violation. Then we can go and investigate it and tell them you're in violation and fine them for keeping it up.
Okay. So there's already something in place?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they're, they're up, and they're, they're all over the place because nobody's complaining about them. And once in a while, I'll get somebody, send me an email about it, and I'll accept the email. I'll go over to the establishment and say, hey, you can't have these up, you got to take them down. And I take them down for a month or two, and then they're back up again, so.
So I get to, we could have reached out to Brutus. This is your opportunity, buddy. You could start sending those letters, and then those, those little feathers will disappear. And the other item was the, was the, the, you know, things that change, like gas signs.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I, because our, our, the language in the bylaw says that it's, you know, wood sign, backlit, or whatever it is, you know, I got it. With the gas prices, they change daily, they change during the day. I think on something as specific as that, that wouldn't be an unreasonable, you know, change to make in the bylaw on that.
Well, I would say we add a provision into the current illumination that applies specifically just to gas station pricing signs, because there's nothing else in town that has, has signs.
That would change, yeah.
That would change like that, that have pricing to, and if you, if you do it specifically as pricing change, then now you're going to be saying, oh, well, if I can do that and have it lit up, well, now I'll do a cigarette sign, or I'll do, you know, what, you know, a lottery sign. And we don't want to encourage more of those signs. So if we, if we specify the gasoline pricing signs as being, you know, an exemption and...
And just thinking out loud, just to, I mean, not that I've actually seen one, because you have an electric car. Do they have, like, do they have, like, you know, charger, electric car, and have pricing on that? Do they have those?
No, the pricing is usually seen on an app or on the display on the charger.
Okay. That goes beyond me, so.
There are lottery jackpot signs, they're usually internal in the stores in the windows. Those change frequently.
Yeah, but that's, that's not something we're interested in. Yeah, that's not something we're interested in. So that, that would be the only item that I think we might want to.
Yeah. I think we could just add a provision to section F.
Okay. All right.
Actually, the Harke's Liquors prices on their street sign.
But those aren't illuminated, those aren't illuminated. Harke's isn't illuminated, aren't they the?
The numbers.
The numbers, I think, the numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, the plastic that he changed, because he goes out and, and changes that like once a week. And that, that's, because that's a wooden sign, and he has the external, he has it lit from the ground.
So you're, you're only concerned with the LED signs?
Just the one, yeah, they're just that very, it came up in, in, when Mobile went buck wild and did all sorts of stuff they weren't supposed to, that we took care of, so. All right. So I think that takes care of that. Approval of minutes from June 11th. I will have to leave.
Wait, you skipped over.
One more thing.
We also skipped over the Norfolk, the cell tower.
No, we already did it.
You already signed those, yeah.
That was that thing you signed.
That was what I signed, I didn't ask about.
You can make a motion, though, to endorse the plans if you were just for the project.
Okay. Yeah, I make a motion that we endorse the plans for 121 Norfolk Road Cell Tower.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And the other is just the, it's a new case, we hear, so you need to approve two people to sign my payroll and one for those payable.
Okay. And while we're waiting on that, let's see, I wasn't here, so Nicole, can you make a motion?
I guess I can. I make a motion to accept the minutes of June 11, 2024.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstained because I was not here, so. All right.
Sorry, you made the motion.
I didn't.
Nicole did, yeah.
I seconded.
I did.
All right, and we will.
So when's the last time you had a full board sitting at this table? Five years?
Yeah.
Been a while.
At least, at least three and a half.
Three and a half. Since probably the last time I was here.
Yeah.
Yeah. It may be the first year, maybe his first year, and then.
A while.
It was through, well, yeah, because it was in June, so it was four years.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I'd like to know if we can wait till the September meeting, because I can't find Chief for the print. So we can just wait till the next meeting.
Okay. All right. All right. Let's see. Our next, we have two scheduled meetings, August 6, September 10. Is there anything else that anyone has?
Do you want to set in, do you need an October meeting now? Set now? Camille?
Uh, we have, certainly.
Jim, anything happen in town? Jim, anything happen in town?
Paving's going to start soon, within the next month, you know, five or six weeks.
Where, what are they doing?
So we're going to do Walnut Street, we're going to do Hammond Lane, we're doing two sections of Village Street. Camille, not Camille, Nicole, your committee, they endorsed the detectable pads in the sidewalk on Pleasant Street. That bid came in, so there's going to be money left over. It came in pretty much where the engineer designed it.
Great.
So we're going to do all that. The detectable pads on Route 109, when they first did that under the TIP program, it wasn't required, but now it is. And it's about time we, you know, ADA, we've had, you know, multiple ADA complaints about them. So they'll be installed too. We're waiting for the state to come in and pave the, or I think there's like seven sections of Route 109. That's up to them, they're paying for it. Where at their whim. If nothing gets done, you know, this year, we will look at, you know, towards the end of the year, to end of the paving season, to do something. There's a couple of sections, Adam Street, that area, you know, that needs to be done. And the PFAS plant, we're finally going to start that. It's going to go up the bid, you know, sometime in the next two weeks for Wells, number three.
All good, all good stuff. October 8, the next meeting, hold on, let's see here.
So August 6, September 10, and how about October?
That's, that's good.
October 8, yes, did that work?
October.
I have no life, so.
Yes.
All right, October.
The town official.
I'm here, I'm here.
Okey-dokey, all right, well, with there being nothing else, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody, thank you.